I was, you probably heard me. I was just looking because I was on the website and I saw Tracy Romo. Is that relative?
She's my sister-in-law.
Yeah.
Your sister-in-law.
Oh.
She's your sister-in-law too.
Yeah.
All in the family.
Good evening, we're going to open the zoning and zoning meeting this evening and start with our public hearing. Doctor, if you could break the pause please.
Right. Notice hereby given to the Staffordz zoning commission to hold a public hearing on April 28th at 7:00 p.m. in the Veterans Meeting Room. More or less town halls consider the following. Special use permit application submitted by C. Tracy Canastrary to operate a commercial riding academy section 5.02E. Location 81 Buckley Highway, MAP 54 lot 27 in the double A zone. And also a MAP amendment submitted by applicant down at Stafford to create highway industrial district. Location 2 Middle River Drive, 30, 32, 38, 39, 40, and 44 West Stafford Road. MAP lot 47, lot 17A and 18. MAP 48 and lots 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Also zoning text amendment submitted by town of Stafford to create the highway industrial and location 2 Middle River Drive, lot 30, 32, 38, 39, 40, 44 West Stafford Road. Lots, MAPs 47, lots 17A, 18, lot 48, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 in the highway business and industrial. This here person may be hurt and copies and the application and legal notice and related information are filed in the Stafford zoning office. Cynthia Romo, Chairman, disappeared in the J.I. on April 22nd and also April 25th.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with the public hearing for the applicant C. Tracy Canastrary. We will hear from the applicant first. We will allow the commission members and the alternates that we have in the audience tonight to ask any questions or make any comments and then following that we will open the comments to the general public.
Do I state names?
Sure, if you could, yes.
Okay, I'm Tracy Canastrary and I'm applying for a special use permit to conduct riding lessons on our family farm. We have 22 acres and we were recently awarded a variance to have riding lessons using our 65 120-foot riding arena. The lessons that I am planning on conducting would be by appointment. So generally it would be for children and beginning adult riders. So they would run from approximately on weekdays after 4:00 because I'm a school teacher, so I can come out of home. So from after 4:00 and would be finishing up around supper time. So too late for every weekday and then they would also be on the weekends as well because they would be by appointment would be about one, two, three riders depending on the level of the riders would be there at any given moment, most likely one at a time for beginners. So there will not be significant traffic, there wouldn't be significant parking needs. So we'd be able to use the existing driveway at our residence to take care of any parking for riders. And as far as lighting or anything like that is concerned, we don't need any exterior lighting except for normal pathway lights, you know, during the winter time if somebody's leaving after dark. But besides that, there aren't going to be any floodlights in the riding area or anything like that. All of the lights for the riders are right inside the enclosed building. So we wouldn't be flooding our neighbors with additional lighting and stuff like that. The noise level shouldn't be a factor unless the horses are being rowdy in which case. But as far as, you know, that's concerned, we currently have three horses on our property and a donkey and two goats. And so we don't need to have any additional animals join us to conduct our riding lessons. All of the horses that we have are sufficient for the scale of operation that we're planning on conducting. And we are not, at this point, we're not having any kind of orders or anything like that to add to the number of animals that would become. So we're at the level that we're going to be at as far as capacity.
There's an aerial picture of the farm that you have seen. Well, the building wasn't up when that took place two years ago.
And your property totals, is it 22 acres?
Just over 22 acres.
So you've got certainly sufficient acreage then for the number of animals that you call.
There's always been a couple of horses, they have, over the years anyway.
I did take some in your packet, there are some photos of the driveway area. I can go through my report now or wait, we'll discuss it, but appears to be adequate parking, you know, on the ground. It's an existing farm now.
I would love to hear your report, might answer our questions before we ask them.
Do you want now or first to discuss? Okay, the applicant's proposing to conduct commercial horseback riding lessons at 81 Buckley Highway. Section 4.21 allows horse and pony farms, riding academies, and boarding stations within the double A zone by a special use permit. Section 5.02E3 requires that no riding ring be located closer than 300 feet to any property line. The applicant received a variance from the Z.E.A. on 10/2/2014 for that requirement. The existing riding arena is located 170 to 175 feet from yours property line. And just to step back, on the variance application, there was no location on that lot that would be less than 300 feet, would be more than 300 feet because of the shape of that lot. My understanding is that since the private arena was constructed, the applicant has received inquiries of providing riding lessons. Doing so would be a commercial use and therefore require a special use permit. Presently it is a private horse farm and compliant with the zoning regulations. The applicant had prepared a detailed narrative outlining the objective facility, lives, and management as well as impact to flooding properties in the surrounding neighborhood. I am in agreement with the impact statement that was provided. The building was approved by the owner's chairman prior to the construction, which was blocked. The commission may want to set hours of operation as a condition of approval. The applicant stated that, you know, most of it's by appointment, so that's necessary with the discussion.
The only thing I didn't hear were the weekend hours.
The weekend hours would run from probably around 10:00 until early afternoon. So generally speaking, nothing in the evening time.
And not early morning, so that sounds very acceptable, yeah.
Then how do you view your manure storage on the property?
We have an area that we compost our manure that is, you know, significant distance away from all of the property lines. We also have a pond, so we're cognizant of making sure that it's far enough away from the pond that there's not anything that's going to run off. And we're actually going to be building a little bit more comprehensive manure storage area once the yard starts to dry out a little bit, although all the snow has gone, with concrete siding and stuff. And we have been in contact with the extension at Upron and done significant research over the years as far as best practice for manure management. So we do compost it. And the amount of manure that we make, we generally use it in a year's time anyway for our gardening and new bedding and stuff like that. So, anyway.
So eventually this manure will be contained, it's going to be two cement walls, right?
Correct, it would be a three-sided closure.
Right, three-sided, yeah, good.
Yeah.
Have to say it's one of the more conceited applications I've seen.
Yeah, with the variance, it looks pretty straightforward.
Lovely area.
Yeah.
The drawing came with our package, that's not the whole piece of property, is it?
Well, that was a site, it's not the whole property, it's a little bit. But the map, the aerial photo gives you better indication.
You saw this one, Doug, with the full piece?
Yeah, I did, right. On the picture, see, I was looking at the storage barn, how close it is to the property line on this draw. I don't know whether that's...
Well, that's existing, that's, actually, that's the height of that, it's below 50 feet, that's not an issue. That's on the other side.
Okay.
And we're only here for the riding arena.
Okay.
Can I get your surely the unit is there?
Nice looking building.
Do we have any questions from the commission members or alternates?
All set.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Does anyone in the public have any questions or comments for the applicant? Okay, hearing that, I'm going to close the public hearing for the, is it Kent's Island? Thank you, application. We will now open the public hearing for the zoning amendment submitted by the town of Stafford to create highway industrial district.
I'll speak on behalf of the town, David Palmer, CEO. We've had many discussions over this and we retain the services of John Poland, helping carry his report. The area, the area that we're talking about, most of you are aware, I believe. Here is basically the first two lots at the bottom, Middle River Drive. The parcel that Simon says is located on, the parcel in between the driveway to the Stafford storage and Simon says, the South Stafford storage site, Country Building Shop site, up to the roadway that goes back to the cemetery, the Santa Cruz Cemetery there. And basically, there are some conflicts in the zoning map as it stands right now. Some of the parcels are half highway business, half industrial. The bank that's there that's empty, that's an industrial zone, but it's there. So we're trying to organize, trying to organize the designation there. While we were doing that, we wanted to, it was an ideal place to slightly expand industrial uses because of the proximity of the utilities. The water presently ends right at the corner of this area and San Tera Sewer passes by on the road. So to have the ability to possibly get some light industry-type businesses into some of those vacant buildings or retail, you know, businesses like you have in the highway business zone. So that's really it in general. We're hoping to spark something there in that area. It's been kind of dormant there. The former bus company has been purchased by Abishan. They're working on preparing an application and are coming for site approval. They're planning on reusing that building. So, or for Abishan, part of metal building, they're going to dress it up. So, you know, that's one positive sign and that the house that's also on that parcel, my understanding is that there's tenants in it now, but I believe that they'll be moving out in the summer and they're hoping to donate the house to Habitat for Humanity, dismantling. I don't know the progress of that, they haven't been back in yet, one meter or so. But hopefully this stimulates something, especially across the street, there's a lot of empty space there. And, you know, it was reliant on only the uses that were permitted in the highway business zone and now we've opened it up to allow other uses which, you know, might attract businesses which...
How have we defined the highway industrial or uses?
The uses, it's at the back of the report. Page nine, 10, and 11 show the use. Do you have the report here? It's not in the packet, it's not in the background.
Oh, beautiful, thank you.
Yeah, that's what the second, the second part of this, you know, it's two simultaneous applications. The second part is the revisions to the text.
Yeah, and just for clarification, we'll handle the public hearing on the zoning amendment and the use, because we're going to be...
They're hand in hand, yeah. But the uses are checked off there and that's part of the change, it's on the color copies, they're in red. We did, you know, by statute, we had to refer this to Capitol Frog and we did receive a report back from them, which was in your packet. Report dated April 14th, 2015 stated that they had found no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns. I haven't received any correspondence from anyone. We did post public notice and did send others to all the others within 500 feet and...
That's a great change, I think. All the work you put into it is very important.
That CBT building is really beautiful. I'm hoping someone will occupy that one.
There's, I know there's interest in it.
There is interest.
I don't know, you know, personal discussions aren't, but some people are...
That'd be good if we could get that to occupy. No doubt, yeah, that's right. Family Dollar's going to be where that house is.
Oh, yes.
And just to refresh my recollection, did we stay with the original setbacks that were originally proposed?
Yes, yes.
And did we add the rental car facilities? We've had, I know we have had a discussion about that.
No, we didn't make the changes of the contractor's share because the discussion...
I thought I could...
Rental car business, special use permit.
Okay, that was the one that we had added, so, okay, good.
Let's, you know, we discussed it at length many times, sorry. Answer any other questions, anybody?
Anybody on the commission or the alternates have any questions? This is an issue we've been working on over several months, so we're all very familiar with it, so. Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone in the public have any questions or comments?
My name's Art Garret, I have one quick question on, you kind of refer to industrial and residential development?
No.
Because it sounds like it's more industrial, can you stand on that a little bit?
It's industrial and highway business. It's the same uses that, majority of that site is owned highway business right now. And it's adding, adding other uses. There's a long table, pages nine, 10, and 11. The shaded column on the right-hand side of that table allows for, it shows the highway business zone, what's presently permitted there, the industrial zone was presently allowed there, and then the highway industrial, which is pretty much a combination of the two. You know, just so many categories, I don't know what to tell you specifically. Most of these, most of these items that are permitted require a special use permit, which is what the previous applicant had to do. And a special use permit allows the commission more latitude in regards to the regulations as far as maybe requesting more buffer or a different type of buffer or...
Hours or circuitry.
Or architectural features and things like that.
So changing the zoning to highway industrial will open up to a greater variety of businesses to then access the area?
Correct.
Where now it's more limited?
Right.
And your feeling is that that's what led to a lot of those businesses not being filled is because there's less availability?
Yeah, I mean, for someone to, for a person to have the fortitude to open up a business, a retail business of what's presently permitted there in the way the economy's been for the last seven or eight years, you know, I think that's played a big role in those businesses closing.
The hard part, just from a citizen's perspective, some of those buildings look like over time they've kind of fallen into disrepair. It's hard to visualize without some type of a greater plan, that area being business-ready.
Well, that's, well, it's not necessarily business-ready.
This would be the first step in that.
This is the first step.
All right, so there's a vision that the committee has or...
Yes, and it's part of our plan of conservation and development also. You know, it's in agreement with that, that we want to stimulate activity on that parcel. And by adding the industrial uses or the uses that are permitted within the industrial zone, there's a good chance that those buildings could be used for something other than retail uses that might, you know, provide jobs. You know, small shops or so forth, you know, that wouldn't be permitted in the highway business zone now are permitted, would now be permitted.
How do you guys, how do you guys go about...
I'm sorry, could you just state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Greg Post. How do you guys go about promoting something like that, getting the word out there and what have you?
Well, once this, if this gets approved, the Economic Development Commission, they respond to inquiries and so forth. Also, you know, people contact me sometimes, email me or call my office, you know, ask him for certain type of parcel land or building if there's any available. We, I would hope the individual property owners would come out and market it. You know, it gives them, I would think it gives them a larger advantage now to market it, you know, it's open to more potential, you know.
And did you also, I'm sorry, did you also say that the Family Dollar was moving?
Family Dollar was approved, they're going to be constructing a building across the street from Bezos.
Okay, so then that's going to be empty now over in the big Y Plaza?
Yes.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Do I need their addresses for the record?
Yeah, Art Garret, 33 West Stafford Road, Stafford Springs, Connecticut. You can say your address, I have another question, go ahead.
Greg Post, 47 Old Munson Road, Stafford.
So listen, obviously I live across the street from that parcel of land, I've seen quite a few businesses move out. So I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to get the connection because the plan sounds like the right plan, trying to de-energize, but it's an area that's been de-energized, right? I can count three businesses, a Chinese restaurant, some type of, I'm not sure what kind of restaurant.
Nail salon.
And a nail salon and also a chiropractor moved out.
Chiropractor.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to visualize how, again, it sounds like a great idea, I'm not against it, I'm just trying to visualize how this plan...
Like I said, as, hopefully, you know, I'm not sure if it would be developed all at once or portions at a time, but as it is developed, pretty much each item is going to be a special use permit where there will be a public hearing where you're going to see a presentation of what a developer is proposing it to look like and if something doesn't, you know, if it doesn't look right in your eyes, you're going to feel, you can mention it.
No, no, I'm just getting back to curiosity, without pushing the committee if there's confidential discussions, but I'm hoping that the owner of that property is kind of on board and, because it looks to be the opposite as a general citizen, you see businesses moving out.
I reached out, I have never heard back from them.
Okay, so... This causes me some pause. It's a great plan, but you have to have participation from the owner, right? So I worry about that.
Yeah, either the current owner or future owners and, you know, we obviously have no control over the ownership of the, you know, the ownership of the property. But again, we think long, long range, this will just, you know, improve the likelihood of that parcel and all of the parcels affected of being properly developed.
Don't mistake what I said as a critique of what you're doing.
No, no, no.
I'm more thinking just logically based on the here and now, certainly the future could be right.
Well, it proves more than doubled probably that the permitted uses for that zone has been approved, so the potential for the owners is, has increased, so.
I think our basic hope was that we could get more light industrial than retail so we could get good-paying jobs back in Stafford, you know, like computer repair or labs or small machine shops like you mentioned, that is so needed. And so that's why the industrial part of it.
Well, Middle River Drive seems to have attracted quite a few small industry in a positive way. Makes sense.
Any other questions or comments from the public? All right, we'll close the public hearing at this time. And I would call the regular meeting to order. We have Gene Julian, Nancy Lovetto, Jack Mako, Roger Palazzari, myself, Cindy Romo, Dave Paulberger, Sonya Fortman, Officer, Annie Gentile, our recording secretary, and we have with us tonight our alternates Doug Facet and John Perrier. The first item on the agenda is to review the minutes of the April 14th, 2015 regular meeting.
They looked good to me when I went over them and I didn't have any issues, I don't know if anyone else found anything.
I thought they were probably excellent as always.
Couple nice big words she put in. Most of us don't know what they mean, man.
Exceptionally well.
I'd like to make a motion that we cut the minutes for April 14th meeting.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible actions, special use from the application submitted by applicant C. Tracy Canastrary. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible actions special use from the application submitted by applicant C. Tracy Canastrari.
Well, at this time, I'd like to say that this application is just excellent presentation for us, not only literal, but with photographs, et cetera. And I think it's wonderful that people, and especially children, and you're a teacher, will get the opportunity to learn to ride and to love horses. And you certainly have followed all your ducks in a row by getting your variants for the side. And if I may, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion
Yes.
to approve the special use permit submitted by Tracy Canastrari for a commercial riding academy located eighty-one Buckley Highway map number fifty-four, lot twenty-seven, double A zone.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Does anyone feel any, Dave mentions in our package hours of operation. I don't know if we've done that to other situations like this. The one on Talon Avenue is in a much busier area than they are, I don't know if, I don't remember if we set any hours up there at all. Does anyone on the board feel that that's necessary?
I don't think it's necessary.
Well, I guess that when I asked her about the hours, Jean, she was quite, and it's on record too, that she'll start around four P.M. after school time and by supper on the weekdays. And the weekends tend to early afternoon, so to me, you stated those were the hours. If you wanted to put that in the motion, I certainly could, but.
What do you think, Cindy?
I actually don't feel.
It's not necessary, it may hold for an hour or so sometime, so I wouldn't want to hold it.
You can't define supper time like five, six, seven, you know.
I'm okay with just.
Is it okay?
You know, it's not the kind of use, it's not like, and I love Stafford Speedway and I love listening to it every Friday night, but it's not that kind of impact, so you know, if the riding lessons go a little late, I.
And they're indoor anyway.
It's inside a building anyway, nobody's going to hear it then.
Is that okay, Jean?
I just wanted to bring it up, it wasn't that I was advocating that.
Good point.
I just wanted to bring it up and it was in our package.
Good point.
That's all I had to say.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action zoning map amendment submitted by applicant town of Stafford to create a highway industrial district. And we will combine that with the discussion and possible action zoning text amendments submitted by applicant town of Stafford to create a highway industrial district. I would just say I know that this, this commission has worked on this particular application for quite some time. I feel very confident that we've worked through all of the issues that we've had. They've been addressed by both Dave and Don Holland and with the changes, I'm very comfortable that the proposal is, is as we had discussed and had, you know, in concept reached and written on, so.
I totally agree. Yeah, I'll make the motion. We, let's see. Yeah, approve the zoning map amendment and the zoning text amendment submitted by the town of Stafford for the new highway industrial zone. And I don't need to read all the different pages and everything, do I?
Yes, you do.
I do, two middle river drive, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-four, West Stafford Road, map forty-seven lots seventeen A and eighteen, map forty-eight lots three, four, five, six, and seven, and two middle river drive, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-four, West Stafford Road for the text amendment also, map forty-four, map forty-seven, lot seventeen A and eighteen, map forty-eight lots three, four, five, six, and seven, highway business and industrial zones.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action review of zoning regulations.
We're still waiting to leave a opinion on the draft sort of regulations.
You saw that?
Yeah.
I can't hear you, I've got hearing section, I can't hear you, I'm sorry, thank you.
The architectural requirements, the standards of design, I did, Dennis and I sat down and we reviewed the book from Mendon, Massachusetts. I called up there, I spoke with the secretary, she works in the, in the building slash zoning office and also is the secretary for the planning commission. And she says there are no problems with it, it's clarified a few things. I'm waiting to hear back from the chairman of the planning commission. Just that, you know, if there's any things that they wish they could have done differently or something like that. And I also sent a copy to Tracy Lovette, local architect, to get her opinion of it. Now, how they handled, they, it says right on the cover of theirs, that's a supplement to their regulations, which is what we were talking about. On the bottom of the cover is a little glory, but this is, they're guidelines that are a supplement to their zoning. And the reason they did it was they created a village center district and then they adopted these guidelines for just that. I think that's what we should do, you know, like an appendix, you know, to the regulations.
That brings me to my proposal for the village district, I wasn't here two weeks ago, and I know I forwarded it.
Yes.
Was there any good, bad, and different?
Well, we didn't have much of a discussion on it yet, we, I circulated, I handed out eleven by seventeen zoning maps for consideration of where people might be thinking of, you know, the limits of districts, we're approving of more than one district. So to start giving some thought, you can look and see what the present zoning is, I don't know if you have a small copy, I know it's online, but I can give you a.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of it.
But, you know, we're, one of the items we were discussing was, you know, it's not right there, there's an informational meeting for the possible prospective roundabout, don't play Shell's dining.
Yeah, how are they going to do a roundabout at Shell's dining?
There's a big map on the wall by the town clerk's office that shows it, yeah. But the DOT is coming, they're.
So are they going to make Shell an island to itself with the roundabout?
No, actually, it's, the roundabout is northwest of Shell's and it's going to give Shell's a lot more space and the
That little road's gone.
road there will be, will be just access for two houses. And the curb cuts will be reduced there, the traffic movements will be reduced, it actually looks like it'll flow pretty well. I'll be at that meeting also, but the point is, one of the things we mentioned was, you know, maybe, it's kind of going to be like a gateway to coming into, you know, a more developed area commercially. Right now, west of there is residential houses, there is an industrial park subdivision, it's not developed yet, behind walls, but you know, it's kind of going to be a focal point coming in. So, you know, that's something to consider maybe when we're thinking of limits of whatever overlay districts we decide to come up with.
Dave, I have a copy of that drawing in the car, I'll go get it if you want it.
Sure.
Do you want to look at it?
We're talking the road or?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, the thing is, we had talked the meeting before about doing some draft thinking about village districts and not saying that this would be the only one. It's just that why I designated Stafford Hollow to include Mill Pond, Furnace Avenue, East Main, Main through Main Street is what we specifically talked about that needed to be separated. So I did not mean that this would be just the only district.
Right, no, no, I didn't take it, I mean, I was just, one of the, one of the discussions we have was, you know, there, I think we need to do, my personal opinion is, I think we need to do these one at a time.
Well, that's why I started with.
Right, and the village district type district is most important, I think.
I guess if you're going to have like three or four different overlays, do you name each one? Like instead of just village district, it would be Stafford Hollow Village District?
No, 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 no.
No?
I think, I'd have to double check on that, I think.
Because Avon did, they, they.
Separated, well, they may have unique, you know, different, Enfield has Thompsonville and then they have Hazardville, two different types of overlay districts, but, and the reason I think they did that is Thompsonville is a lot more dense than Hazardville. You know, buildings are a lot closer together, you know, less parking and so forth.
But if we're looking at the same uses and the same regulations, whether it be in Stafford Hollow or in, you know, in downtown, then it would just be, we could just refer to it as the village district.
Oh, see, I thought they were going to be separate based on where they were, the regulations, as far as architecture.
Well, the actual, the actual physical districts, well, well, we need to talk about that if you've got, if you have in mind different, different architectural requirements.
Well, I thought that's what we had discussed because of Main Street and the hollow and, and the homes along East Street, et cetera, is so different from.
Right, and I think, but I think, I think, I think the standards that you're hoping for, for the, for say Main Street are the same as the hollow as far as the type of construction or whatever, I think those are the same.
That is true.
So that's why, I think we could have, if those are for whatever it's called, overlay district, that overlay district could be in place along Main Street, it could be within an area of the hollow, wherever else you'd be appropriate. But it would be the same guidelines and then.
Right, but this wouldn't be appropriate for the one ninety commercial area.
No, probably not.
No.
Definitely not.
Well, and that's why we talked about maybe another type of overlay zone, you know, maybe we don't need one. You know, you don't want to make it too burdensome, burdensome.
So are we going to consider my proposal here with the Mendon report, have you done anything with it, no?
I, we have, we have a lot of work to do. I, I'm waiting to hear back on this and I'm going to start adjusting this to our town.
Because basically, that's what this is, that report.
And then, I like, I like the idea of the pictures being in there because
Yeah, definitely.
you know, like, at the last meeting, you know, it's pretty hard for a developer to stand there and kind of disagree with what our intent is when you have a photograph of, you know, we like this, we don't like this, you know?
Absolutely, I already would like to change something I proposed in the beginning, I said the village district from the hollow. I think it should go right from nineteen, the Mass line down, because you have the Penny School, you have a lot of, you know, you have around the lake, I think that would be appropriate, so I mean, already I'm changing things as you look and you think about the different things because from Mill Pond down doesn't encompass like the Penny School and, and another area, so it'd be the village district. You know, expand it up nineteen all the way to pass the lake to the Mass line. Because that's all residential.
I also want to dig out, there is a delineation of the historic district also.
Well, we do.
For the hollow.
Yeah.
We, well, yeah, it is.
It is delineated, I need to find that.
Right, I think Amy Stagel has that, she has the paperwork.
Well, we, yeah, I actually.
So what does that do relative to if we put it in an overlay district?
Well, I don't, I just think the parameters of that district need to match this, you know, incorporate it.
That's true.
Actually, we, Laura, she's a floater around, she ended up finding all that information because the state had filed it under Hartford County instead of town.
I remember seeing.
That's why no one could find, yeah, so.
Well, Amy insisted it was and she was right, because she's part of that.
Yeah, yeah, she's in it.
She's in the district, yeah. So, okay, so we'll just.
So I think we concentrate maybe, you know, not so much on outside of these areas, we concentrate on just these areas and this would be our next.
When you're saying these areas, which?
The areas that like you outlined in your description.
Oh, oh, okay.
You know, we'll get a consensus on the limits. And if it's going to be, we're going to have more, more than one location for these to apply to, like Main Street. Does anybody here Stafford speak on them?
Yeah, the plan I've seen, do you also recommended the Staffordville and West Stafford? So that, you know, where's the centers, you know, the very centers of those areas.
And any, and any change we make has, should comply with the plan of conservation and development. And it is outlined pretty well there. So, and then, I'm working with Dennis, getting some feedback from Tracy as far as the standards. And in our discussion, we were talking about the grade and trade method, it's a unique concept, I haven't found anybody that does it yet.
That's Dennis, unique, right?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that may be something that we postpone, you know, we adopt regulations, but, you know, tweak our regulations, but, but doing that, I had a long conversation with Tracy Lovette, she says, you know, subjectivity of, you know, you looking at it and liking it and me looking at it not liking it, and, you know, who grades it? And the turnover of people on commissions, you know, how is it graded?
Well, I like the idea, I think we have to explore it more.
Well, we have, we have plenty of little wires to put out before we get to that.
But you do need the standards before you could even consider give and take.
And I think it's important that we try to incorporate the weeds aspect of it, you know, the sustainability and the other considerations. So I mean, that's, Nancy, you went here, I don't know if you saw the proposed regulations of the WPCA, their drafting regulations. Those are going to be an appendix to ours as well.
By the way, we didn't have a meeting at all.
You didn't?
We didn't have one at all.
But I, Rick Hartstein had asked me to comment on that, and one of the, one of the items, the only reason I'm mentioning it now, one of the items was they don't want any infiltration bases or units within fifty feet of the sewer line. And you look here, you know, we're planning conservation, development, you know, recommends rain gardens and vegetated swales, and now the sewer department's saying you can't have one within fifty feet of the sewer line, well, sewer goes up the road fifty feet, you know.
No, you're totally right, I think we have to have input with them before they do it.
Yeah, I did submit two pages of comments to them.
Good for you, that's great.
I think we're all, we were all in agreement that this was pretty comprehensive, just a few changes, I think.
It's great, I'm very happy you found it, it's very valuable.
I think it's a great idea to get Tracy's input too.
Yes.
She gave me a few more items to put on the list first to think about.
All right, so we will have further discussion in two weeks. New and other business.
Just to, regards to the appeal that the Levington Rock riding club has made to the zoning board of appeals for the city of Siskiyou issue. I met out there last week with the club's attorney and state club representatives regarding the buffer on the east side there. Basically coming into agreement of where, they need it for pretty much all the way. Well, starting port and feed in, you know, where the first driveway comes in. They're, they're going to keep mature trees, they're going to get on the interior of the stone wall. wall, add some plantings. And they requested that I, when they get their plantings or decide on plantings, they're gonna run it by me. And then when they're out there installing them, I told them to buy some extra and they can plant them elsewhere. But as we go along, I'm gonna be inspecting it for, there is one area that appears to be a ledge, and they're gonna do a stockade fence.
Beautiful. So a solid wood fence. With the good side facing the road.
Yes, yes. So.
They know all that.
Yeah, and then, you know, in the report are the other, what we discussed before, the attorney did email me following that meeting. That's in the packet.
Kind of interesting.
They, their, their bylaws, which they had when they got their special exception in nineteen seventy-one, had a camping season, or had their season. And it doesn't coincide with the season within our regulations. However, their exception predates our regulations. Our regulations allow, you know, the season, and after the season or outside of that season, a person could camp for no more than thirty days in a row. So it's kind of a non-issue because our season ends in the middle of October. They wanna go, they have a Thanksgiving ride.
Oh, is that what it is?
So they wanna go, their season goes to the end of November. So theoretically, you know, just with the thirty day extension that our regulations allow, brings them to the middle of November. And if they left for a day and came back, they would still be in conformant. So I don't think it's a.
So the thirty day, the way we've dealt with it, you can do the thirty and then do more. It's the continuous.
It can't be continuous, right?
Okay. Because I, I'm reading these numbers right. It looks like their season would be two full months longer. But like you said, thirty days.
They also did say, you know, they, they're looking for it for that, for a big thing on Thanksgiving. Most of the people get their campers out of there because they don't want them snowed in. All of a sudden it snows and you can't get them out. So.
And they start a couple of weeks earlier, what, the first of April instead of the fifteenth? But I suppose that would depend on mud and snow and everything too. So any other campground in town could, well, they can't start the two weeks earlier.
No.
They could stay the later with the thirty day.
Well, they could come for thirty days before.
It's thirty days between October and April.
So you still could. You could come April first then for the fifteen days there. Okay.
So I, personally, I don't think it's a real issue or a deal breaker. I think we're finally close to resolving.
Well, that was my question. Is it a deal breaker? Did, you actually get to talk to him since the email or no?
No, she wanted me to run it by the commission, see how you thought. And she's been, I believe she's been working with Ed on language for the ZDA. It's not necessarily gonna be a withdrawal. It's gonna be a government understanding of legalese.
I gathered that from what you told me before. Yeah, interesting. So they're still gonna go to the meeting?
Yes.
Well, I think it's great that mediation with the attorneys seems to have come to a conclusion and we can avoid court. That's always better. And I guess this is not a big deal to me. If this is the only issue, they say here that they hadn't talked to the town attorney about. Everything else is settled. And if you're comfortable, Dave.
Yeah, I would just let her know that we're comfortable with them keeping their, you know, rather than arguing over, you know, what predates what.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Underword says if these terms are satisfactory to the commission, the club would apply for campground renewal with the stipulation that they have a special exception and cannot be denied. Is everybody okay with that?
Well.
Let's just say that they don't follow their rules or whatever. I mean, would that become a huge legal issue where now they're saying, well, you can't deny it?
I can prove the cease and desist. Basically, basically, it's, it's, all the campgrounds do it annually, and it's, I go and do an inspection. I check with the fire marshal, the health department, appropriate agencies, have there been any problems? You know, I do inspection, you know, is it good housekeeping? And, you know, have there been any complaints in the last year? And typically there isn't.
So it would be okay with the provision of that?
Right.
That we're doing everything.
Yeah, it's, 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 you got to miss most of the, it was a unique, very unique situation because they did have a special exception from the zoning board of appeals. And that was before there even was a planning commission. And our argument was that we could take action to make them conform closer to our regulations. Their attorney disagreed. I issued a cease and desist. They filed an appeal. It's pending before ZDA right now. If it's not resolved, or if ZDA upholds my order, then it would go to court by then. If, if they didn't uphold my order, the commission could decide to pursue it. But no one wins in court.
Well, that was really my only concern is that if this is approved that way.
They had actually applied and went through an application. And the whole reason, they have a, some belief that they're going to be denied. And none of them have ever been denied. Not that it couldn't happen, but we're not, we're not looking to shut them down. We're just trying to keep everyone happy, you know?
John, John brings up a real good point. Has that wording gone through the town attorney?
Another word.
Because that, I, you know, John's got a real good point there. That's an uncomfortable wording. For me, I'd be curious to see what the attorney feels. What do you think, Madam Chairwoman?
Well, we, I mean, the club is right in that we don't have any legal right to take their special exception away. And we've never, we've never taken that position. The position that we always took is that, is that Connecticut case law, regardless of the fact that the special exception predated our regulatory authority, that we still have the right to reasonably regulate them. And we have a situation where we've got, you know, multiple neighbors coming in and, you know, arguably, there's a, you know, nuisance created. That falls within our realm of reasonable regulation. So, yeah, I mean, I'd want, I'd want Ed to look at this too. But I do agree that we can't, I mean, I, I have no problem stating that we can't remove the special exception. But they're also not applying for a special exception. We're asking them to apply for the annual permit renewal.
So we're not touching the special exception. But like you said, if we have reasonable regulation and new membership says drop dead zoning board, we don't think those things are reasonable, then we would be pushed to that possible next step someday. So, but you know, that's a, that's a good way to look at it though, Cindy. We're not regulating that that exists. We're regulating the new permit.
And that's the case law that Cindy mentioned. And there were one of them was very recent about existing nonconforming uses that are permitted, you know, have either a special exception or something else. And try, you know, I think one of the cases was a gravel pit, you know, bringing, trying your best to bring something to the conformance as far as, you know, screening items like that. We're not looking, we can't stop them using it.
Don't want to, right. Okay, we understand each other.
Last item I have is acceptance of an application submitted by the town of Stafford that cannot help relevant commission to amend section four point six four A, standards of design, area of import, and section four point two one, scheduled permitted uses. The application is a copy of it in the packet. It says, the application proposes to increase the maximum floor area for retail use from forty thousand square feet to one hundred and ten thousand square feet, and reduce exterior retail area from three thousand square feet to one thousand square feet for seasonal and temporary sales. Now, this application has to vote CROG, just like the previous application was voted on. No less than thirty days for a public hearing. We need to start a public hearing within sixty-five days of accepting this application. And I suggest a June ninth date, if that's okay. I finalize the referral letter to CROG and send it.
There's a question mark on the fee of the hundred and fifty dollars received on the application.
Waived by a town.
Waived by a town?
It's a town agent.
Makes sense.
I'm sure he waived, but it doesn't say that.
On the application, so.
It doesn't. It says fee of a hundred and fifty dollars received, a question mark, and it doesn't have yes or no. You're looking at it.
So the June ninth will give a CROG enough time, you think?
Yeah. And I, and I, you know, enough time for, for any interested parties to.
Interested parties to what?
To be prepared. Plenty of time.
So reducing the exterior retail area from three thousand to a thousand, did that affect finances? Were they, are using all of their exterior parking lot for retail space?
That's already, that's already has a zoning permit. This would be for new applications.
So they're reducing one area that we increased, and they're increasing threefold the other.
Yeah, they've submitted the application. I haven't had it explained to me.
I guess not.
Well, well, all we're doing is accepting the application. We're not setting a public hearing date.
Right. So they're preparing their presentation? Is that it?
I'm assuming, yeah. I know they've had, they've discussed it several times at their meetings. And, you know, you know, like, like the report we got back on our application will be a similar one. Or if they have questions, they contact me. They did contact me. On ours, they had one question about the total area that we were changing, so.
All right. Anything else to?
I make a motion to adjourn, man.
Well, you jumped on it quick, Roger. Second. He's fast for you when it comes to that move. Everybody in the audience was hoping you'd make that move. They've got horses to go check on.
That's right.